All right, good evening. This is the Rutland Town Planning Commission. And it's November 14th, 2019. Welcome, everyone. Let's start the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the Lord, the United States of America, the interior republic of which stands one nation under God, and who is to hope will never be destroyed.
Okay, welcome, everyone. So, we will start. We'll get to your stuff in just a moment. We'll start with the approval of the agenda. And everyone here should have a copy of that. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Almost. Just a second.
Good luck with that one. Bill, and all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Is anyone here just to do public comment? Are you all here on the boundary line adjustment?
We're all here on the boundary line adjustment.
Okay, okay. Let's just go into that. Bill, where would you like these folks to?
I think that they will probably be just one. They need to be fine.
Okay. So, Mr. McCallum, are you the spokesman?
Yes, I am.
Okay. So if he would come up to this table.
Sure.
We're not usually in this space. We're usually over at the town hall, so everything's moved around on us a little bit.
That's fine. That's fine. Thanks very much for bringing us on the agenda this evening. There's two issues that we've got. One is for the boundary line adjustment and the other's for a subdivision.
Okay. Could you introduce yourselves?
Yeah, I'm Mr. M. McClellan with the firm of McClellan and Associates in Rutland. And I'm representing Patricia Young in the Patricia Young, a relative to the property which she owns up in the Robson Drive area of Rutland Town. This situation has arisen out of a partition action that started back, I think, probably in 2008 or earlier. And finally worked its way through the court and with a number of attorneys, some of who are now deceased and some are now disbarred. It has been a storied past, but at any rate, here we are. This ended with an agreement whereby the property that was owned by Kip Young and Robert Walker Sr., they owned it together, was partitioned and was divided so that Robert Walker Jr., who's sitting there, and Patricia, his grandmother, right?
Mother.
Son?
Mother.
Mother, I'm sorry. Ended up having this property divided between the two of them. We had a boundary line that is shown on the plaits that are here that was agreed as part of the stipulated settlement in the partition action. The boundary line was drawn by Raymond Page, who was the surveyor who worked on this for us. What we have, are coming for the Planning Commission for are two things. Number one is that under the terms of this map and the division of the property, Pat is getting a portion. She has a piece of property here. We've got the plaits here. I don't know if you'd want to have it in front of you or yeah, I would think because it's really complicated without them. We have six. So, on the plaits, you will see if we start on the southern portion of this, there is a piece that is Patricia M. Young, Book 95, at page 485. It's an irregular shaped parcel. That this is property which Pat had.
Okay. 95, 485?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
This is a parcel that Pat had before any of the partition action. This is something that she owned. This is where her home is located. So, as part of the partition action, you will see that on the northern side of the property, we've got Robert E. Walker Jr. and Celeste M. Walker, Book 193, page 327. So if you look where the gravel drive is. Okay. So this line that runs, and actually it says, starting on the eastern side, is north 87, 05, 05, east 250, 481. Then runs south 37, 15, 15, east. Then up north 82, 26, 42, 10. That is the boundary line that was put in under the terms of the partition action. The settlement agreement was reached in the partition action. So that Patricia had the property that was to the east of that line. Robert Walker Jr. had the property that was to the I'm sorry, the south of that line. Robert Walker Jr. had everything that was to the north of that line.
Which line?
That would be the line. Great, thanks. Yeah, this is zigzagging. Goes like this.
Yeah.
Okay.
So is that a real line?
Yes.
That's a boundary?
That's a boundary. That's correct. That was the survey line done by Ray Page.
As part of the settlement?
That's correct. Yeah.
This is north? Oh wait, no.
This is the north, right. So he's got, Robert Walker Jr. has the property north of this boundary line and Patricia has the property that's south of the boundary line.
Why is that so gigantic?
It had to do with the topography of the property. On the ground, it makes sense. It's not an attempted gerrymander or anything like that. It does make sense on the ground. So, at any rate, what the boundary line adjustment that we're talking about is there is going to be this property which is going to be combined. It says the Book 201, page 69, Patricia M. Young. And it shows a property line that we are seeking to abandon because she will own all of this particular piece of property. So what we're looking to do is adjust the boundary line to pull out this, what would now be an artificial boundary line. That was property that was owned by Kip Young and then went to Ethel Young and then went to Patricia by means of decrees of distribution.
So the new property line identified on which line would be taken out then?
The line that would be taken out is, you see in here, there's an existing line. It says, "Existing line to be abandoned."
That's the one that runs from west to east? Just to left of Patricia M. Young, Book 95, at page 485?
No, 201 at page 69.
There's one more running north-south and
Yeah. Yes. And so this is the line that would be abandoned. You'll see where it says, "Existing line to be abandoned."
There are two of them, that's my point.
Yes. The one that runs here.
Here where?
I'm sorry. It's running east-west on Stonewall.
Yeah, the east-west.
That would be abandoned.
That's the one I was talking about.
Yes. That would be abandoned. That would be abandoned. I misunderstood what he said.
Okay.
Yeah, so that would be abandoned. So this would be effectively one piece of property that Pat owns.
There are three areas identified as Patricia M. Young.
Yes.
One is on the western side to the south of that, the existing line to be abandoned. One is to the north of that existing line to be abandoned. And then the other one is on the west side, which is the larger property.
Yes.
So we're going to have two Patricia M. Young parcels?
So, yes. What exactly? That's exactly correct.
Right.
Okay. So that's, the purpose of the boundary line adjustment is just so we have two parcels rather than three. One Patricia Young.
And she owns both sides of the
Yes, she does. So then with the, basically the subdivision, what we're looking to do is to have the new boundary line that is, that Ray Page put in, the zigzag line. So that we would have everything to the south of that that would not be Patricia Young, one parcel now with the boundary line adjustment. That this would now be a separate lot as well. So Pat Young, right now, if we didn't do the boundary line adjustment, there would be three parcels. There would be two parcels now.
And where does the subdivision go again?
The subdivision would go, it would go to the line that is where it says, "New property line" on the boundary, it says 307
Towards the west, four, right here.
Yeah.
So the western edge of the property dividing Robson Drive area from the Patricia M. Young property line to the south.
So it would be the 201, 69 would be the one to be
If you went up on, if you see where there's on the top of the map, it says Pasco, F., and Estro, Mandela. Okay, if you come
Right here.
Yeah. If you see there's a new property line.
Yep, that's the new property line, 307, 40.
Correct. And then that runs down to 294, 45.
294, 45, which is also
And so then you're onto the big parcel at that point in time.
So the So that's the boundary line adjustment?
Actually, no. That would be the subdivision. The boundary line adjustment was the, where the existing line is to be abandoned and then there's another existing line to be abandoned. That's the boundary line adjustment. That makes, that combines what Pat currently owns with the section that comes up to where the new property line is. So that would be one parcel.
So the line in the subdivision then is to the north of the new property line, 307, 40?
Yes. It would come, it would come to the, it would run down, you see where it says, "New property line" and there's the 294, 45?
Yeah.
That's where that's running.
Over to Stonewall, right? Is that the parcel?
Yes.
The subdivision?
Yes.
So can I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
We have the line that starts out at south 68 degrees, 45 minutes, which runs in a west-east direction and then heads north. Is that an existing line? Is that a proposed line? What is the purpose of that line that segments the western area of the Patricia M. Young property and the eastern end?
I'm not sure I'm following exactly.
Yeah, that's the exact line.
Yeah, sure. Thanks, appreciate it.
This line here?
Yes. That is, this is existing.
It exists.
That's correct.
But it stops here because this is a new proposed property line, correct?
Correct.
So what does it divide?
What you've got is this. This particular piece of property was owned by Patricia Young. It's not part of the subdivision. This was her existing property.
You got that because I can see that that is happening on, there's no derangement.
Then she was, then she was getting this. Okay, that would be, that's what we are combining. This with these two. Yes. Okay?
But not this.
But not that. That's correct. That was, that was where Kip Young's dwelling was. And the reason we are trying to subdivide this or get a subdivision permit from the town is that this is going to be under a contract sale to sell that portion. So it would come down here.
So I'm going to ask one question at a time because I don't want to get into both subdivision boundary line adjustment until I'm clear on my own head.
Got it.
And it takes me a while, so my apologies. So with this line here, it stopped here. Is that correct? It stopped at this?
Today.
The existing line?
Yes. The existing one?
Because this is a new property line running up here.
That is correct.
Where's the rest of the existing line I see?
I did not see that.
It's connected down to here.
Got it.
So this portion here, down to here was all one parcel.
This portion here?
Yep, up to here.
Up here was one parcel?
Yep. The boundary line does not go to here. The wall is there, but it continues over. This is an existing boundary line which goes over to here. So this was part of this?
This line here?
No, the line, the existing boundary line goes here along the wall and then it goes north. It's up here and, no, to here and then it comes back to the east. That's the way I understand the original property to have existed. Which means that this dwelling would have been part of this parcel. That's the way I'm interpreting that in this.
So the existing boundary line was this, that was the existing, that's what Pat owned?
But that's not shown here. This shows a wall, but the boundary line goes here and then over here and then to here and then that existing boundary line is going to be abandoned. So according to this map, this, I'm tracing with my finger, goes here, past the wall, to here, up to here, back over to here and along the wall, east-west. That's what this shows me. If I'm wrong, then I need to be educated. But that's what it's showing.
The, my understanding of it, and
This?
So, actually, Pat, you hear first, I think. I think it's just still a little So your existing is this, is it not?
Yes.
That's not what it's showing.
It was the 12 and 3.
That's not 12 and 3.
I'm not adding that for
And the, this, Stonewall is the boundary line? On this far side?
See, it doesn't show.
That's not the way it's showing.
It shows a turning here. And I think what is, what's happening here by what Ray has done on this actually is this, this property is what she had. This property is what she got from the estate, okay? So it comes down like this. And what we are doing is having that to get rid of this boundary line here to combine that in.
I understand.
The new line's going to be like this?
Yes, because I guess made the rest of the metal.
Right. So the new boundary line would come like, would come like this is what she has got?
This line is being abandoned. That's what it says right here. This line that runs from the wall north to, actually, no, no, excuse me. This says D. There are two intersecting lines. One, I think, which is supposed to be new. I think is this one over, no, this one here? I don't know what this line refers to because it shows that it goes here, but it also says, "The existing line to be abandoned." Goes past D, over to C, and down to B.
The intent would be to come like, this is Robson. So the property that is going to be sold would be down here, okay? You're correct. That this comes down to here and this would come here, 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 here into Robson.
That was the farm in the barn.
The farm in the barn. So that was, that was Kip's dwelling at this point.
Right, this was always in this big parcel over here and so that's not changing. My question is, what's happening really in this area here? Because it's not clear to me what is existing. Because on this, based on what I see for the designations, is that the this was one, this was one whole property, one whole parcel that went and included this dwelling and stopped, stopped here. So may I take another, a highlighter?
Sure.
This is what I see as the existing property line. And that it goes to here and that is the whole parcel.
That's correct.
That's what it's standing on.
I know, but I told three times that
I understand.
This, this is a rock wall and it is included in the existing parcel. When people are saying that this is the boundary line, it has
So why don't you let, why don't you let Pat go? So then let's not
I asked for four and three. I asked for the rest of this metal and, and the wet, and a metal right across from my house. So that's what that is, four and three quarters.
So you're going to pick this piece up right?
That's correct. So it's going to go like this, down here and over to here. So this is coming out, this line is being removed. That's the boundary line?
I think all the confusion came from this main line.
The implication is an existing property line is the wall.
No, that's not, that's not
No, I understand, but the, the occasion initially was just the way it set out. But it actually goes this way.
Highlighter to the rescue. Two highlighters.
Two highlighters, no problem. This comes out and this is all one parcel?
This is a separate D, correct?
This, this was, yes, this was a separate D. That is correct.
If this house does not go with this?
It did not. It did not. But the plan is to incorporate it.
That is correct.
And this is Kip's? Was Kip's, that matters?
This is
Okay, because I thought you said this was
That doesn't really matter. Doesn't matter who owns it. This dwelling is being incorporated into this parcel. This parcel is not, is not, is not. The dwelling is going to stay the same, but the parcel line is going to not include this yellow shaded area anymore. It's going to incorporate the orange shaded area.
So could somebody go over here with the highlighters and what's going to be the third person? The third person?
That's what they want to talk about.
Okay, later.
No, that's, I think, the secondary. That's why I wanted to get this first. The secondary question is the
Third.
But this is the boundary line adjustment. We're okay with that?
That is correct.
We're, so we're there. We should be taking action in two steps rather than getting all of you. So we're going to get out of it in two motions. One for incorporating this boundary line adjustment. And then we can take out the other piece.
Are there any issues with this access to this dwelling?
There are none.
With the new boundaries?
Well, sure, I mean, you want to, anyway, we'll continue to talk on this.
Excuse me?
That is going to, that's going to be subject to a contract sale. We're going to be subject to settlement.
Yeah, but why don't we, why don't we do that through this, this, and this?
That is correct.
So this, which includes Kip's? Yes.
But there's no egress currently unless it comes up.
If Robson Drive comes down and then the egress comes here, that would be the egress down, which is on the, on the ground. Actually, that's always been the right of way into the dwelling.
So there's a right of way from this parcel?
From Robson Drive? The egress goes through
Right, but if we're changing the boundary line, then it's no longer part of this parcel. It would be part of the new parcel as a result of the boundary line.
That's correct.
So that's Barbara's question is, showing on this map, this road is no longer incorporated into the property in which the parcel was located?
That is correct. That is correct.
So the
So there will be an easement that will be given by Pat?
So that's, that's the
That's part of the match. That's part of
No, that's part of the boundary line adjustment. It should be part of the boundary line.
Yeah, I think so.
So there has to be an easement incorporated into the boundary line?
Which there will be.
Okay.
Well, in the, I don't know if you need it as part of the boundary line. That's, we're happy to put it in. When this property is being sold, part of the purchase and sale contract is that there will be an easement from Robson Drive across the retained property to the dwelling.
I think though, in terms of the boundary line adjustment, to make sure that it is clear from a procedural standpoint, I think that the parcel, since they're separate parcels and then looking at boundary line adjustment, that includes the egress to Robson Place, it should be part of our granting of this boundary line adjustment.
That's just Makes sense. It's going to happen anyway. So it makes sense, but it makes it clear.
It makes it clear then if we're doing it in the boundary line adjustment that it will be
Yeah, so the easement would be part of that.
Yeah, and that doesn't have to be, there's no change to that? Not with, but it's just subdivision. Like this way. It's just that it's already noted.
Is it already in this D?
There is in the D, it just states, "Subject to rights of way of record," I believe. And I have no issue as far as including, and this is part of the subdivision, the boundary adjustment, that language that that has shown on this map is included.
I think it makes sense. Boundary line adjustment Your partition action only took 10 years?
Excuse me?
Your partition action only took 10 years? I had one that took 11. In Bankton, Gavin, the local
Remind me not to hire you.
I was cooperative. That was easy.
So Barbara, are there any action steps necessary before we make a motion about accepting the boundary line adjustment?
Let's just go through the form here at the checklist. Proposed changes to boundary lines, yes. Name, address, the professional preparer.
Yes, Randy Page on the Blue On Survey Consultants LLC.
Numerical and graphic scale, a planned date, and north arrow.
Yes.
Existing features and facilities, including roads, public tollways, utility easements, wooded areas, structures, water courses, ledge, wet areas, excessively steep slopes, rights of way, maybe stone walls?
So the easement or the right of way isn't currently, well, will not be current, is not currently on here. Does that need to be included as part of the motion that it would be pending that? Okay.
So I think conditional part of it.
Right, so then we just make that conditional? Is that correct? Because it needs to be obtained or at least marked?
And the easement happens?
Yep.
Okay. So am I making a motion?
If I can go all the time, I'll be happy. I'll make a motion to accept the boundary line adjustment contingent upon the inclusion of easement and right of way onto the
From Robson?
From Robson place to the new parcel, including the dwelling at 201, page 69. No?
To the new dwelling, to this dwelling?
To this road. The dwelling is on here. The new boundary line will take this out. So there has to be an easement
No, okay.
To here from the new problem, which would be 207.
Is there a second?
Hold a second.
So it will be from, right, from 95, the new 95.
So the easement will be for the existing road there?
Road's there, but the easement will be from here to across this new parcel. That parcel was originally
Part of the same thing.
Yeah. Hey, Bill, does that make sense? Is that acceptable?
Yes. So it's as depicted on the survey?
Okay, all those in favor? Closed. Do we have a hearing on this?
Don't have to.
It's the BLA number?
I'll take care of that. I haven't given one yet, but okay.
And we don't, we don't have to have a hearing?
No. On a boundary line? They don't have to. No, on a boundary line, they don't have to.
I don't see any courage?
Nope.
Okay, let's move on to minor subdivision.
You've done that. Thank you so much for doing that. So the subdivision is much simpler, it is, if we had a blue highlighter, we could do this, but I guess it's just what's remains. It runs here to the boundary line. From Robson. So before you start, so actually, that's what I was gonna ask you, where does it turn?
Where does it turn?
It's here, 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 here. Yes.
This is going to decide that.
That's correct.
So this will be.
So it's gonna be.
After, after the boundary line.
Number, oh, I was gonna say, I marked it that way. And then this parcel will be, so.
It's confusing.
Well, highlighter, second, this is a different parcel.
That's, this, this is.
And this one, this one's already existed.
This is the new, that's the boundary line that was done by the surveyor as part of.
But it is.
Existed.
It exists to separate this property here from this one.
Yes.
So it's gonna follow the existing boundary line over to here.
So, so how about, so Rob, you could tell us then, what, what is actually gonna be subdivided then? Tell me the, because I definitely kinda lost, I don't see any change.
No, that parcel has nothing to do with the rest.
This is being.
Right.
Just asking where it is.
This is divided.
And it looks like what's left. Well, yeah, it comes here. Here, up here.
Yep.
Here. Here, here, up here. So what changes?
Nothing changed.
So do you, you're not, the new boundary line is gonna still.
No, that's.
So I don't think there, does there need to be a subdivision?
No, because you, it's changed that with the boundary line adjustment.
So there's really not a subdivision?
Boundary line adjustment was between this parcel and this parcel.
So, no, what are you saying? This parcel was part of this parcel.
Before you. Is that right? That push?
Yep. Because, the reason I know that is because the orange highlighter tells me what I started it, which is what my question was.
So that beyond, beyond this particular, beyond this lock line adjustment, there's no other changes in property lines? This parcel is gonna remain still as the same as this parcel, but this taken out, then your parcel's gonna change?
Some dividing that into smaller parcels?
No, not. So I don't think there's a subdivision.
Just the boundary.
Now I'm confused. This was all one parcel, so if you put in this boundary line, does that exist?
No, that's.
The green is new one.
Then we have a subdivision, we have a boundary line adjustment on this side, I understand. But we're creating, because we're merging these two, that's the justification.
That's the justification.
Is that we're merging two owned by the same person. But this and this were also owned by, this was all one parcel. Now there was a subdivision, and the partition was where?
Partition, this was, before we started this, this was, this was that. With the partition, it was this.
And the reason you tell is because it says, book two oh one, page sixty-nine, it said, book two oh one, page sixty-nine. So that's what tipped me off, that there weren't two different parcels in the very beginning, because these two were identified technically.
I understand merging these two parcels, but it seems to me you created another parcel here.
All that happened, from my perspective, is that this thing flipped to a very, 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 over again. That's all that happened. So instead of, and there's been a change in the size. So the size of this parcel has now increased by whatever this area is. And this parcel, which was, it was booked two oh one, page sixty-nine, has now been decreased by the amount of this.
I share, you own this one?
Yep.
You tell us a different D.
No.
No, the same D.
The same D.
Alright, so the boundary line adjustment was.
This is all from here?
This is the boundary line adjustment.
And there's no need for any additional roads or municipal services?
Anything or passable protection there?
Everything's gonna remain the same?
I already spoke to this, he's.
I think it takes care of.
So there is some subdivision.
So are these the whole private road?
Uh, that's, that's, that's I wrote, that's then I wrote for nineteen eighty-six.
There's no town road, the wall.
No.
Okay. You're consolidating this, and you were, owned this, and you're now selling this.
No. No, no.
She's just adjusting her property line.
It's on her property. I thought from the description law, that this, the finger stroke, that this goes.
Still same owner?
Same owner.
Different parcel number? Ninety-five gets this, and two oh one is reduced by what goes over ninety-five. She owns two parcels, all she's doing is changing the boundary line from orange to yellow, nothing else.
And when that becomes two pieces of property, she can convey this piece.
The whole thing.
Without a subdivision, I don't see where I'd need one. The line's been adjusted here, and where's there a subdivision? Where we wanted to do the subdivision, where we felt the subdivision came in, is that there was never a formal subdivision done with this boundary line that was put into the partition. That's, that's a pretty important piece of information, yes.
So that's not on record, that's, that's a proposed?
That is, no, it is, that is what was set by partition, and that, that is what is the existing boundary line. And it was our thought that we needed to get a subdivision because this, again, all of this property was owned by Kip and Robert Walker Senior. Robert Walker Senior conveyed his interest in the property from Robert Walker Junior. And then the partition actually split it physically between Robert Walker Junior and his mother. So that's where we felt the subdivision was necessary because of this particular situation, because of this boundary line.
And so the court, the partition judgment order did not indicate it was subject to any subdivision?
It did not.
Well, then that has to be open. That's all you need, right?
So I'm, I'm a little lost, so does that mean that we don't have a survey on, on record?
It's, what's these two parcels?
What's the partition name?
And if we doubt them, not, but that's subdivision.
The partition was.
Back to the store.
So it's just last year.
And we had talked, and when Ray talked, I believe, to Howard Burgess, the issue that Howard had, he wanted this completed, so he could see the, the perimeter of the property.
This property, this parcel was previously part of this parcel.
Owned by both.
Owned by both, that's right.
And this was, this never went through a subdivision.
That's correct.
So that's a different question. So this subdivision, separate from the boundary line adjustment, needs to be addressed so that it can be accurately reflected in the records.
I think that had come before.
Well, the one.
I think Howard had brought that up before, that he was talking about that there was a subdivision, there were some changes done that weren't, didn't come through the. That's what started our process of, of the applications and the things being filed.
This is the one?
Yes.
So, uh, on a separate note then, this parcel which is now owned by Robert Walker Junior, needs to come back before the planning commission has approved subdivision from the previous property. Is that correct? So that does not, that doesn't affect the boundary line adjustment?
I don't think so. But this is all under Patricia's name, the subdivision.
We filed the subdivision permit under Patricia's name. We asked Rob to be here, which he is, obviously. And we can certainly, on Rob's behalf, we can do another application for that particular parcel, if that's what the planning commission needs appropriate.
What is this application for?
For the subdivision, to kind of clarify this, right?
Right.
From my perspective.
Wouldn't that do the trip for both parcels?
I would hope it would do the trip for both parcels, if the subdivision for here was granted, that would create the subdivision, and this is the only portion that is left, but.
Would they have to be joint? Right now, it's a matter of record. And the land records, is the partition order recorded?
The partition order is, is not, uh, recorded, no, because it was done by a stipulation, and then the partition was, was settled and dismissed. So what you've got is a conveyance from the, uh, using this boundary line adjustment, there was a conveyance into Robert Walker Junior.
But it never officially went through a, um, well, it never went through the process for a subdivision. So that, that process needs to happen so that you, after it's recorded, you show.
Doesn't she have to be a party? You, you own this land.
She does now. Well, Rob, Rob Junior owns this.
Did you ever listen to this?
Yes.
Uh, yes.
As part of the partition.
Or my dad probably did.
The only time, yeah, grandpa and dad owned both, just here.
I did, they did.
This part was never conveyed to my mother.
Right, so as the sentence edited, legal errors on the, on the whole property, somebody needs to file for division so that it's, if either of these properties get conveyed in the future, there's a clean D.
And a clean boundary line.
Right.
Right, which we, the boundary line is, that is recorded in the land records, so my, I guess my question would be.
The land records in terms of which D?
In, in, when Rob and Patricia, under the partition, divested, and so Rob was conveying his father's interest, so when he had that interest, and Patricia had the interest, basically the conveyance was, the boundary line came here, Rob got what was north of the boundary line, and Pat got what was south of the boundary line.
Who was the grantor?
The grantor as, as to what was north of the boundary line, Pat was the grantor, but south of the boundary line, Rob Junior was the grantor.
Okay, so you exchanged these, this boundary line.
That's correct.
And, but there's no subdivision, and this was all one parcel owned by you, you own this?
Well, not her, but her.
My dad.
Your dad.
And then so it went from her, her dad by decree distribution to her mother by decree distribution to her.
Right, right.
The whole thing. Her interest.
Which is.
Their interest.
And retire.
Okay, so at the time of the conveyance, when this line was used, you conveyed to Rob your interest in this property?
And actually, it was, I believe that it was Pat as the administrator or executor of the estate of Ethel. Actually conveyed that interest, so as Rob said, Pat never got an interest in this, that's correct, it was Ethel who had the interest in it after Kip died.
Right.
And then as executor, Pat conveyed that interest to Rob.
So there just needs to be a filed subdivision of this parcel for that to be clean. Is that correct?
I do.
So I think that that needs to be then conveyed from Pat to Rob, well, I mean, conveyed. It needs to be subdivided, and then all the conveyance will be legitimized.
Right, so what we had done is, and Pat has filed a subdivision for her, so I guess my question to the planning commission is, do you want it to be resubmitted with Rob as a joint applicant? Or do you propose that Rob does a separate subdivision, which we can do, whichever, whatever works best for the planning commission?
A separate one meaning two?
So in other words, we, we filed a subdivision request for this.
Right.
Would you want Rob to file a separate request, or would you want Rob just to join in this existing request?
I think he can be a joint applicant if you want him to.
Terrific.
All, all we really need is for Pat to be the one requesting the subdivision, and then the conveyance stays.
I think that's what we have in front of us right now.
Well, I'm just, I get lost when, when we say that, that this, this was filed, but there was no subdivision, how is that done? Our records now show this as a separate property?
Well, I don't think so.
I mean, it's being taxed.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I thought you were being taxed.
It's been taxed, it's confusing to me that.
So it's de facto, I think it's a de facto subdivision.
Almost.
Except it's never been formally applied for.
So it hasn't been reported.
And, and Pat was never the owner of all this, the estate was, she didn't own it.
Right, but the estate never appropriately conveyed that.
Right.
The estate was the party to the partition.
So does she do it as the estate, as the executor of the estate, does she do it?
That's a good question.
Because.
What was that showing?
That was a really good question.
Since, she never owned all this, the estate did, she was the executor, executor of the estate, so does she file a subdivision as the executor of the estate?
I think that would be.
Because she was never the owner of it.
That's right.
She, you know, but she ultimately became the owner of it because it went, again, it went from Kip to Ethel, and then Ethel's estate was settled, and the interest of Ethel was, was decreed to Pat.
But technically, the estate divested at the time of death, and the estate just confirms that all the debts are paid and it's free, so she is an appropriate applicant.
Okay.
Okay, am I correct?
Yes, I believe you are.
Good question.
So I'd like to just, just a minute.
Um, just, uh, before, you know, grandpa was alive, Pa was alive, and it was Pa and my father that, when this was first handed over. So, I mean, Pa, I don't know how to word it, but give, you know, he did this over to my father while he was still living. So it didn't, when he passed, this was already Dad's, this didn't go down to my grandmother and then to mother, this was, this was Dad's land.
Well, that's what I was gonna think, so this was, this has been long, a separate parcel.
Yeah.
And.
It's just another subdivision.
Property.
Right. So this is a technical.
Was it always part of this?
Yes. Before, before it was split, yeah.
Before the partition.
It was split, and how long ago was?
Twenty eighteen.
Twenty eighteen, you got it?
No. I, I got, well, I got the land in twenty seventeen, at least I'm paying money on it.
Based on, based on what Rob just said, this goes back decades.
Yes, yes.
And it was never, the only thing that, that happened, it was never, the paperwork was never filed to actually create a subdivision. So I think the only thing that we need to do to make this technically accurate and to be reflected in the land records, is to apply for the subdivision of the original property, which we now own as we own it. But now, Rob can be, I suppose, a, a joint applicant, but the, the point is that just doing that will convey to Rob the, the property which he's currently, again, taxed on, and nothing else is really.
Just cleared it up. Yeah, so it's gonna be. So the subdivision application that we filed, that would be sufficient then?
Yep.
Which is under Patricia's name?
Yes.
So what needs to, what does the platte need to do in order for that, because there is no platte, correct?
I, I don't know.
There, this is, is the platte that we would be anticipating using, there is a platte that's filed in the land records that does not show the boundary line adjustment, and it doesn't show, obviously, it, it doesn't show this perimeter, it showed. It showed this, that Ray Page did.
And it doesn't show this.
It does show that, actually, the one that's recorded in the land records, it's filed in the land records, does show that. It just doesn't show, it doesn't clean up that boundary.
Right, that, that needs to be, what needs to be shown, at least from my perspective, is what was originally part of the parcel, which was this, it doesn't matter what, I mean, this is the plat that does the boundary line adjustment. But you need probably the entire perimeter that goes all the way over to here, and up and around here, showing that this parcel bounded by, I'm gonna do another orange, bounded by here, this way, is now being separated from this. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yes, that is, that is the section, because the rest of this is now, that is, that is Pat's, that's correct.
This was already Pat's, you look for it, so what we need to be able to see, and I think that Howard would appreciate this, but I'm not, I'm always technical advising, and just trying to understand, is this and this, because it was all one parcel. So that one parcel needs to be divided up.
And see that, we can go through the subdivision process.
I'm sure.
We still need to do the subdivision?
Yes.
Which the subdivision applications we filed, we're all looking for, is a...
And I think there's...
This is 65.
I, yeah, I have math, people go on that.
You're saying you want a separate plat for the other property?
Because I didn't get that part.
We're using a half.
When the...
It's 56, I think.
Yeah.
That could be the way.
That could be the way.
Totally.
So we do the plat with boundary line adjustment and subdivision?
I'll talk to Ray Page, where he, as long as he spells it out, so that it is, it's easily seen.
No, it's a different...
Okay, terrific, I'll have, and then am I wrong in saying that since it's, since it's historically is a piece of property that you can file, it's more, I mean, we have to go through the process, but it's a formality.
Right.
I mean, there's not gonna be any changes. It's just gonna be a formality.
Well, it can, it can form, it must have existed. It existed.
Wow. I posted it last year, but I didn't pay taxes this year.
Well, plus, there's time, if you're into the tax rate, you know.
I didn't have.
It is, yeah, it's confusing, thank you for being so patient.
Thank you, yes, thank you for having lived, as I said, thanks very much.
It'll be simple after this.
It just really can follow you over, so.
Right.
So you've seen all of the final plat requirements?
Yes.
On the application?
Yes. And as has Ray.
That was the first last time, because I didn't see.
So Rob, do you want this?
That would be great, because I would love to get that to...
I'll send your picture, I'll send it.
The other thing is, I can...
I'll send your picture, I'll send it.
Perfect.
There was a couple, something.
There is a phone.
What was the last time?
Last meeting.
No.
Okay. I'll send.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
So, you gotta go through that?
Yeah.
Do you folks wanna keep these, we have six, and taking one difference, you have five left?
We don't need it, we need another one.
I would take one. I'll take one.
Pretty much a double issue. Thanks.
Truly appreciate it, thank you very much.
Call the town dot com, Bill? Yes.
So we'll need a hearing on this?
I think so. Yeah, because we have to, we have to warn it, and we have to...
Right.
But we don't have to hear it, but I don't know.
And we can wait, we can wait until the hearing, see the final plat.
Yes. Yeah, you have to, you're supposed to review it there, to make sure it meets all the requirements, and then you can damp it.
I'm not sure, Rob, there's gonna be another hearing, and we have to warn it.
Okay, we have a list of the adjoining landowners attached to the application.
Quite a list.
Yeah, twenty-two. So I will get the plat back to you folks, that Ray Page gave for the delineation.
And you, yeah, you can bring that to the hearing.
Would you like to include it, because that was my question.
I don't think we need it before the hearing, but it'd be up to you. And, and so what would be a convenient date?
Yeah.
Our December might be, well, I guess we can do it on the fifth, three weeks from now.
You've got two in September, or December, right? Two times?
Well, I'm not sure. That was one of the agenda items, or one of the things.
Yeah, that's what I looked at.
The holidays, yeah, sometimes mess that up.
Yeah.
So we're talking about the next meeting?
Yep.
For the hearing, December fifth.
I think that's okay, I think we can, I think warning is okay for that, by the time.
It's, yeah, it's, it's the fourteenth, so fifteen days.
Twenty-nine.
It's, it's, yeah, they'll have to go out pretty soon. So, yeah, if that changes, we'll, I'll let you know, but we'll be at December fifth.
Five, six thirty again?
Yeah, will we still be here, Bill?
Um, probably.
Okay.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
Once again, thanks so much.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Yeah. So I'm just gonna say satisfactory for boundaries and area of particular property owner, you know what they are, we need them, we've done them.
So what do you think, a note would be, showing them, showing them the plat?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
That's what we're looking for, is that contention.
Right.
It's just the subdivided part that needs to be shown, right? Everything else?
Right.
The area, particular property owner, those are what we want.
That's what I'm using.
Those subdivision lines is fine, name and address of professional repairer is there, granite steel plan, date north arrow, existing features?
Yep.
Oh, pretty little.
No, no.
There's a wall.
Everything was there, the drawings and everything, for the subdivision.
Well, it's sort of...
Well, it looks like, right, but those are all...
What do you mean by as far as, you know?
There is no dwelling, of course, in that area. They have a dwelling, but there's no dwelling, listed on this.
There could be a well there, or another dwelling, not included.
But there's also a dwelling, is not included. So that's not complete.
Okay.
I thought that there was a dwelling in here, but...
There was one, a bigger one.
There was a dwelling, the house went, the road went to a dwelling, didn't it?
No, that was this one over here.
I guess we should have...
This, this one you were on?
No, I'm talking about this one. This was the subdivision.
There was a, there was a well.
I thought there was a well.
And that's Rob's house.
It's on here, yeah, you saw it. That's what I thought too, but when I saw it...
I thought too.
Yeah, okay.
So this one is different?
Yeah.
Why? I'm not quite sure. Proposed improvements, including roads, utilities, utility easements, rights of way, they were not applicable, really, but...
The right of ways are applicable.
No, not on the, not on the property, the properties that was...
This is proposed improvements.
They weren't.
That's right, yeah. And then the location map.
So there's no proposed improvement?
Right, I don't think so. So, ready for hearing, I guess, yes?
Well, it's ready for hearing, with the contingency that, so that this be completed for that, for the hearing.
Right.
Conditional, not contingent, but, so it's conditional, right?
Okay. So we've got this really long list, the identifying title of subdivision, and the numbers there.
Yeah. Like it just is that the application has to have all that, yeah?
Name of the municipality, name and address of owner of record and the divider, name of professional credentials and plat designer.
They should be there.
Boundaries of the area, particular total land owned by the owner.
Yep.
Date true north point and scale.
Yeah, well, we'll be...
Can we just go back to one? Well, did I miss, there actually shows acreage, where, did I miss that?
Acreage? Acreage, it was on each, we have a name.
Yeah, it was, sorry, I forgot.
I thought...
You know, a lot of times, you just...
Um, identification of the zoning district applicable?
Not applicable.
No, it's not on the small one.
It was on the other one. It was sixteen over there, and this was sixteen, and this was sixty.
Right, this is not marked, the original subdivision here. But the subdivision, it's not marked on the small one, so the question is, was it marked on the large map that you're... Oh, I can tell you, because I have it on my phone.
Proposed subdivision lot lines, we'll just keep going down this. Yes, streets, highways, easements, sidewalks, and alleys. Yes, buildings, existing proposed, everyone saw all the dwellings. Municipal and public utility easements and rights of way. Sewer main and connections, not up there.
Not there.
Water mains, not applicable, drainage systems and connection to...
That's, sorry.
Parks and open spaces, not applicable.
We need to go back, the bigger map does not have the dwellings, and it does not have the acreage.
There's a possibility that this, it's too heavy there, this may be where Rob is living, there may not be a dwelling on that property, I'm not sure. There's gotta be, he's paying taxes on it.
I think, there's a house, but I think he is doing this because he's gonna be building a new house.
Right.
So I think part of this is, there's, part of this is going to be that there's going to be a new parcel that's gonna have a new house on it, and he's moving out of the existing house that's already there. There's no existing house marked on this. How many houses does it show? Not at all? On the parcel, on the parcel, it belongs to...
Rob Jr.?
Rob, yeah. There is, there are no dwellings, and there's no acreage. So the acreage needs to be included on the new plat, as do any, oh, dwellings, okay. So those are conditional to both.
Other essential features. I guess not applicable. Location of trees.
I'm looking for some.
Could wave that. You can wave it?
Wave it, okay.
Do we need to make a motion?
Yeah, just a second, let's just, let's read here. All information specified in nine through eighteen, which is streets, highways, water, and sewer, and location of trees, with respect to adjacent land of owner, and with respect to adjacent land of others, to a distance of one hundred feet. Do we need to keep that in there? It does not go up, is it, from the property lines, to show what's...
Six, one hundred, says it, three quarters of an inch around the whole property.
I think it is.
It's okay, that's a yes?
Yeah.
Okay. Contour lines?
No. There are no contour lines.
Do we need to have those?
This is a minor subdivision, is that correct? It's really, it's really correcting. I was just waiting it here.
There's a suggestion to wave the contour lines? Are you okay with that?
The question is, if we do it, if we wave, if we wave the contour lines on this one, are we setting an uncomfortable precedent?
We never have to put them on there.
I'm sorry?
We don't ever do them. We always wave it. I mean, almost always, very rarely, unless it was on there, I've ever seen contour lines. We always wave it.
I saw it once.
Well, there you go, one time maybe, but...
Well, maybe due to the steepness of the, you know, access for fire or something.
Yeah, I think it's, my sense is that this is a unique situation, and we're comfortable waving it.
So, there is, the gravel drive actually goes over to Pat's property, cutting through Rob's property, going all the way down to...
To the mine.
Yeah, but...
The dwelling has an access requirement.
Right, but that goes all the way down to Rob's town place. So I don't know if there's any, if there's any easement necessary for access in Pat's property, of the barns on Pat's property.
Isn't it gonna be right here?
Right, the barn isn't accessible. This road will end here, so...
We don't know what's there. Those bars are...
They told me that those roads were all private, so they, they don't count as far as town business goes.
No, that, you're gonna need an easement.
I think for the property lines, you'll need an easement, if you're gonna use them.
Well, that would have to be worked out between the property owners, because unless it becomes a town road in the meantime, before the division takes place, then it's...
The town road is down on Rob's town place, though. Rob's town place isn't a town road. Anything with a place is a private road.
I'm sorry?
If it, if it's a place, it's a private road.
So all, all of those are private roads?
Yes.
So I don't think we need to be concerned about anything. They're, they're not asking for any changes to that?
No, there's no, yeah, there's no, there's no town road, off of Post Road, there's nothing, we don't, we don't have any.
Private roads can be disappear, or reappear, or whatever.
It's, it's a place because there's more than three addresses on the, there has, there's more than three addresses, so there has to be some sort of designation, but it's a private road.
So, do, would they, should we bring it to their attention that there may be, they may want an easement for the...
I thought you did. No, that was only from the dwelling, which was now changing location. So we need to, we need to have them make sure that the parcel isn't landlocked? The parcel will not be landlocked based on what we just gave them, but access, the road that was accessing the barns further up on the property? Okay.
They're, they're not asking for any changes to that?
Yeah, there's no, there's no town road, off of Post Road, there's nothing, we don't, we don't have any.
Private roads can be disappear or reappear or whatever.
It's, it's a place because there's more than three addresses on the, there has, there's more than three, uh, addresses, so there has to be some sort of designation when it's a private road.
So, do, would, would they, should we bring it to their attention that there may be, they may want an easement for the gravel?
I thought you did.
Uh, no, that was only from the dwelling, which was now changing location.
So we need to, we need to have them make sure that the parcel isn't landlocked?
Uh, the parcel will not be landlocked based on what we just gave them, but access, the, the road that was accessing the barns further up on the property.
Okay.
There's not the access.
Is it, is it the responsibility to ensure their access as part of this? I don't think so.
There's dwellings almost in that, as far as I know.
Two barns, I, I don't know.
I don't know if we can be concerned with.
Well, I, I don't, I'm not saying, I don't, I wasn't implying we should, but my question is, should we, should we at least let them know that they may be concerned and they can work that between themselves?
Right, yeah.
That, that's, that's all I, because we, we weren't focusing on this, when this came up in terms of the boundary line adjustment, so.
Okay, just a couple more here, um, typical cross-sections and profiled of proposed grading streets, not applicable.
I, I think that would want to be applicable, there's a, um, development plan, right? There's a site plan versus a, a plan.
So are you saying a ten A? Are we ready? We ready?
Um, if, if a private sewage disposal is required, it should comply with ten DSA nineteen seventy-three, um.
That's not up.
I don't think so, because there's nothing there yet.
Preliminary designs of any bridges or culverts which may be required. All parcels of land proposed to be dedicated to public use in the condition of such dedication, N A?
Yep.
And, uh, any other requested waivers or variances.
So will you review that with them?
Yeah.
So the application has been approved.
Yeah.
Date received. Fifteen. They won't keep you up much longer. So it's time for those, okay, move it, run along.
The body of efficiency, is that?
Speaking of efficiencies and models, um, so, down to whole business, uh, the, uh, and over to Dana and his committee, um, who came up with a, um, a new draft, the guy in the office, yeah.
So I want to thank, um, Nolan, Jerry, and Sherman for their hard work and dedication, we met on October thirtieth. To Billy Moncombe, for reference purposes. Uh, we met on October thirtieth, uh, to go over the information we had collected over the course of the previous three months uh, regarding the, um, the guide to service conduct and transparency that we had before us and, uh, with everybody's participation, we, uh, pared it down to a one-page document, simple to understand language, uh, that was not duplicative or anything that the select board had, um, already done and it references the select board's adoption of the conflict of interest statement, adopted on twenty fifth of June. And so, uh, we put this together and circulated it for, in final comments from the committee, made, I think, all the head of back about changes that were suggested and this is a draft for consideration. Oh, did I go?
Oh, would be corrections.
Oh, okay, I didn't even know of this.
Well, thank you, um, the group, obviously they put some work into this and came up with something, um, real succinct. Always love one pages.
That was the goal, to push this again. I said I thought it was.
Simplistic, yes, please.
And so, uh, anyone, is there any discussion about any of this?
How I was observations, because there were several people who were not part of that subcommittee, but. Any feedback, things that we didn't consider, things that may, uh, have been omitted inadvertently?
And my apologies for not sending this out with the other twins, but, um, I thought being as short as it was, we could probably digest it.
I think it looks good.
I think the only two things that were different from that, uh, were just four and five, right? I mean, really, the only things that would be mentioned shortly that, that, that anything else was stuff that we hadn't had any.
Uh, right, yeah, I think most of the work was centered around areas four and five, points four and five, which were significantly, um, consolidated.
Most of the work was. You were there, right?
I just came here this morning. Now, the only comment I have is what, the intention was to try and incorporate all of the comments made at the first meeting when this came up. And in large part, that's your suggestion that we come on the front end, that it would be helpful. And that kind of opened, uh, my view of the process. And I tried to respect Jim's email, uh, when he said code was uncomfortable and that's why we named it guy and I think probably that's the best approach, uh, so, we, we owe community effort, commission effort.
If anybody's interested in this, this was, this was the battle plan that, uh, I was putting, I think it has its two pages worth of notes and revisions and changes that Jerry succinctly referenced for, uh, sections four and, uh, five. Uh, section four had one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine points and that was consolidated to two. And section five had three points and we consolidated that to two. And changed the wording and so on and so forth.
So is everyone very comfortable with this? Jim, are you comfortable with, with this? With, with their proposing?
Uh, this is the first I've seen it.
Right.
Would like a little bit of time to review it.
Okay, okay. We can hold off on taking action on it? Did we take action on the subdivision? Or did we just send it off?
Bill's shaking his head and I'm shaking, you.
You, you went over what you were, the burial adjustment you approved.
Right.
The subdivision one, you didn't do anything, you just went down the list, but you didn't go any farther than that.
Right.
That's right, that's what I'm thinking.
But we, the subdivision, we weren't supposed to approve until the next time, you know, the court.
But we can, we should, probably should move that we're gonna have a hearing.
Yes.
Sure.
Well, we're, we'll go back to that.
Well, we're, uh, we're gonna table this, um, are, is everyone, who's gonna be here on the fifth?
I'm not sure I'm gonna be here.
I'm not sure. I'm certain I'm, I'm not.
Are, are, we could have a forum on the fifth.
I'll be there.
Jim?
When's your next meeting?
Uh, December fifth.
So.
What's the next schedule to make, Jim?
I have a family birthday, I'm pretty sure I'm not gonna be here.
So we got four missing and we all have four Howards.
Howard should be back.
Howard be back?
Depends on what kind of.
He's a little high.
Oh, oh, Jesus, this is Howard, oh, jeez.
Yeah, no, he's, Howard's out for a while.
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
How, Howard is out for a while.
Well, we at least did, we didn't move, do a motion yet on this hearing. Is that enough, we're gonna have a forum?
So, the, um, other topic that we need to discuss is another meeting in, um, uh, December because technically it would be the twenty-sixth. Um, it may be more prudent to postpone meeting number five to the meeting number twelve or something.
You said that's a select board meeting.
Then just be one.
The twelfth is not gonna be a good night.
Oh, oh, that's not gonna happen?
No, no, the select board is meeting, so the select board's having their budget meeting the twelfth, so.
On Thursday?
Yes, it's a, it's a, it's a budget-only meeting.
Okay.
Yes.
So we've got the, um, nineteenth.
Christmas function?
Yeah, it's getting close.
What's getting close?
Oh, this is, this is the, uh, public notice.
It sure does.
Pressure a little bit, um, so who can be here on the nineteenth?
I couldn't.
Uh, I can't either.
Okay, so.
We've got five anyway.
Yeah, and maybe, I don't know about where Andy's gonna be at that point, but, but we've got five.
Call wrong and tell them.
I don't think we're gonna have much business between now and then to have, try to squeeze in another meeting. You, you never know.
Yeah. If that's what it is, what it is, I mean.
We'll say the nineteenth.
The, our next meeting will be the nineteenth.
So I think we, I'll make a motion to, um, uh, cancel, uh, the meeting on December fifth and warn a meeting for December nineteenth.
Second.
Everybody good with that? All those in favor? Is that right? Opposed? Okay.
So I'm gonna move that to the fifth, to the nineteenth.
So, the twenty-sixth is a Thursday as well?
But I don't.
Just here, just one minor question. Twelve, nineteen, are we gonna be here or?
I guess, yeah.
Touring is out.
What's the question?
Uh, where we, where we would be on the nineteenth, I wanted to assume we should be done by that.
Well, the reason I asked is for the warning. If you're gonna warn a meeting.
Yeah.
You gotta give a place, of course. And that, that's why I asked the question.
So to be safe, you can just, we can just meet here.
Do you think that can be arranged, Bill, that?
For the nineteenth, yeah, that's, that's fine.
Okay.
So that would put the next meeting, uh, January ninth.
Which I think makes sense, just wait another few weeks and then it's completely out of order.
And then it's third.
And that just, since the location from there, yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's what we would have done anyway, I think we would have skipped the twenty-sixth and gone, we wouldn't do it on the second likely, we'd probably do it on the ninth anyway.
Right, so the next.
So, uh, December nineteenth is the next meeting and then the one after that is January ninth.
But that doesn't affect the meeting on the nineteenth, the day exactly, it's just reschedule and rewind it.
Right, yeah. Yeah. Who knew Clark for twenty twenty-eight was?
Was that, um, control for, all the rest not in?
Cancel the, the, the.
Okay, might, hold up, Jim.
Okay, um.
We still have some, some business, business, I think, we still have to do a warning. I don't know whether to action motion.
It's part of the problem, yeah.
If I make a motion to warn a hearing for the subdivision of Patricia, um, and Young property for, uh, Thursday, December, uh, nineteenth.
The minor subdivision?
The minor subdivision of Patricia and Young property.
Their second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Um, anybody have any announcements or anything? Um, if anyone's interested, uh, there will be, uh, another forum for local energy committees, I can just pass this out, on, on December eleventh. It, it will, it will cover, um, some of the, some of the other enhanced energy plans that are in the works around, um, and be a little, a short how-to on the section two forty-eight process, that's when it goes to the P U C and just another opportunity for local energy committees to get together. So I've, I've sent the notice to the select board energy committee, um, but I'm not, not, they may or, may not be interested in that, but anyone's, anyone's welcome.
Um, with respect to the, the discussion regarding the guide to service, uh, I would make a motion to table that, um, discussion until January ninth.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? January ninth for the guide.
The service.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yeah?
There's no other questions. In the minutes, I think you indicated that the select board passed the, uh, session plan, uh, submitted, uh, in group criteria ten and they removed certain paragraphs and can quickly help you with those, so we can follow up, I'll take a time.
It was, there were some, um, there were some typos in, in the criteria and there was one, uh, I recall just one paragraph that they requested to be taken out and it was near the beginning of the plan. It was kind of a setup about how important energy planning is or something.
So it wasn't in the ten criteria for preferred status, it was in a broader of the plan?
Yeah. It, it definitely was not a very critical paragraph.
Change of subject.
But I, yeah, I cannot remember why, the reasoning behind, you know, why it should come out, but I can give that to you.
Oh, yeah. I just was curious, since we worked so hard on it, and first ever heard of it, that they took it out.
So I'll, I'll get it to you.
Now, this goes to the regional planning commission.
Oh, that's, yes, thank you for bringing that up, it does, um, the regional planning commission will be looking at it next Tuesday evening, um, at six o'clock, it's a committee there, the regional planning commission, and, um, so that is the formal procedure for getting it approved at the state level now. It's called determination of energy compliance.
So that would do the energy plan at practice, isn't it?
Yes, it's six o'clock.
It's too much.
It goes, that's a committee review and then they decide whether to send it on to the full board, that same evening at seven. Anyone's welcome, come attend that.
Right, it's running twenty-eight.
The nineteenth.
Nineteenth.
Next Tuesday.
Eleven, nineteen. What time?
Um, the committee is six and the full board is seven. So that, that's been, there's been a notice posted on that for, for a hearing of the full board.
Do we have any input in it?
Um.
I assume you're not sure about that committee?
Well, I, I helped staff the committee, um, so, um, any comments are welcome, there does not have to be any kind of formal presentation, the, the committee will be looking at the report as. The committee will be looking at the report as mostly in regards to whether it meets all of the standards and whether it should be given this energy compliance. They won't be making many other comments about it other than that, that it meets all of those. That's what they're looking at. Is it, is it complete enough to give final approval?
Will they recommend the final approval or oppose the approval?
That's their choice. Great, right.
And does it make any sense for any of us to be there to answer any questions they have? Or is it not working at all, however?
Anyone is welcome. I don't think they'll have too many questions other than, you know, you sure that it meets the standard or what page was that on or things like that.
And maybe they have to answer those.
Yes, yeah.
That's a six-year at the planning commission.
Okay. Anything else on that one? Okay, let's take over the minutes. From, what, the 24th? Uh, in the 14th.
I'm hoping to approve the minutes from my full.
October 24th. Okay. Everybody still looking forward for Dana, who you've got some yellow handwriting, what in the world?
No, I just.
Oh. But Dana, stand for approval.
Norman, he's pretty sure there's better deal than this.
Norm?
I'm watching there. Oh, it's required. You can play out any typos.
I didn't feel a question.
I didn't notice any, did you? We ready for questions?
Yep.
Jim, you ready?
I can't hold.
Okay. All those in favor, the minutes from the 24th of October, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any extension? Anything else before we adjourn for, what, five weeks?
Okay, yeah.
Six?
Six, I'm glad you know. Sure wasn't counting, right?
We have the last week, it's the 18th.
Did you want to perfect the budget to decide on it before we, before we meet again?
What's that? What about budget?
Talk about the budget at all, if anything you need, because you're gonna decide on that by the 12th, so.
Right, right. So I don't know where we stand. I need to, I've got a date set up with Kirsten to look at where our standing stands. Is it your understanding that the Select Board will level fund us?
I think they're taking requests and then they go from there and see where it leads and.
They're not in a budget cutting mode, did you know of?
Not necessarily, but they're not giving everything away, but balances, yeah.
Yeah, and has, has Andres been invoicing us or billing us?
Yes.
Okay. And that's been coming out of our budget?
His meeting attendance has been coming out of your budget, yes.
The two meetings?
Yes.
The work is being covered by.
The work's being covered, there's a stormwater line in the budget, that's what covers that.
Yeah, but Grant's probably older than I am.
Yeah.
Is he with the, the grant?
Not anymore, no.
No, I mean, the grant is what he said we had, he was paid regardless of his time, is that correct?
I'm not sure about that.
I think we do agree. We usually have, you know, several thousand at least.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not sure where it's at at the moment, but.
Yeah. So I'll get down, I'll sit down with Kirsten. If we need extra money, I'll ask for it. Because I, I have a feeling we might need Andres maybe another time or. We're still waiting on that interactive map.
Right.
And that's gonna cost something.
It's all in paper.
I don't think he's just gonna do that for free charge. So we'll take with that, but thanks for, for gonna.
So it might be a good idea to at least orderly review our status in terms of expenses as a planning commission. So I would, I would make a motion to review our, because it's year-end, right? It's calendar year?
Fiscal year.
Fiscal year is a calendar year.
Yeah, we do fiscal year.
But it coincides with, oh, it's June?
Yes.
Oh, so I.
July, June, yeah.
That's great. So we should do a half-year review at our January 9th meeting, or where we are with respect to. So why are they doing budgeting?
Tell me, could you have to, yeah, in the town board for.
Town board.
Voting for.
Yeah. Somewhat like school boards.
Sure.
Is there a second to my motion?
Okay. I need to make sense. Something larger.
Yeah, yeah. And it, it's not gonna be an imposition like Kirsten. I mean, she, does she do monthly reports now?
No, she, she does, she does status reports usually at her meeting. Especially now, because it's coming into my different planning, but yeah.
Every Select Board meeting, yeah.
For her, just want to report for the planning commission's expenses. No big deal, it's a three-minute operation.
Yeah.
Good idea, Dana.
We can have a Christmas party for you.
Misleading expense.
You want to amend the motion to, to say if she has any objections or if she has any other suggestions?
Yeah, I just wanted, you know, to make some assumptions.
No, I, I would not. I'm just gonna make the motion.
Should I amend the convention, Kirsten?
No, I would just like to make the motion to. I work in a business office and I, I get a report that's eleven pages long. And it takes 30 seconds to generate that, so assuming that it would not be overly burdensome.
If we have a budget, if we have a budget, there should be some mechanism for us to know where where we stand with our budget. And I don't think we should have to ask someone whether or not it's okay to ask.
There's something we never keep track of.
Yeah.
It's fine.
It is fine.
No problem.
So I'm gonna keep my motion, I'm not gonna vote my motion.
I'll go.
I second.
I'll keep my.
His second. Any other discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thanks, Bill. Got quite a lengthy list for you tonight.
Yeah.
Do you have to pack all this stuff up?
I will leave it here. Well, I will leave it here anyway, so.
If there's no further business, I'll make a motion to.
Wait, one more thing, I forgot about it till then. So I attended the municipal day on behalf of the planning commission on Halloween. And I'm planning, I haven't had a chance to yet, but I'm planning to send out a little summary to everyone. Attachments, things that we.
Oh, great.
So that's coming. I don't have to go through it all now. I haven't put it together yet, but send that out.
So what was this?
So it's, people from the state come and have presentations for people that work in town government.
It's all A and R though, right?
Yes, yeah, all A and R. So there was a presentation on wetlands, on agriculture, recycling, you know, planting groves along rivers, planning for water infrastructure, just kind of 15-minute presentations on each one. And you could ask questions and, yes, this is definitely interesting. Not a lot of things that would, you know, coincide with what we're doing, but, so.
Yeah, that'd be great. And then they used to have it just in one pill year for a full day. Now, the last couple of years, they've had a couple satellite days and half-days. And wetlands is usually included. That would be great.
Oh.
When you have a chance.
So, would you be ready to say something, maybe in January?
Yeah, definitely.
You can put it in the minutes?
Sure.
Okay, so.
Next week or so, I'd like to send out at least the email, just, you know, advance, but then we can talk about it.
In January?
Yeah.
So I make a motion to put a report on the January 9th meeting agenda, or a report from Mary Gattin on the municipal day? Would you then?
That's okay?
Sure.
I'm your pressure.
Yeah, you got too much, though.
That's why I didn't second it. Somebody else said.
I'll second.
Especially.
All right. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and I guess there's one more thing. Norm wants Norm wants to make sure everyone knows he's still giddy over the World Series.
That was official fishing.
Jerry says on that, he moves to adjourn.
Probably 30 seconds late.
Okay, thank you, everybody.